Fields from So it was 227 meeting. This is the request for the 329 Russell Street. When we had left off at the last hearing, we were going to be sending a notice of received just back from on the same with some additional boards and get other some additional information. I don't we're not we're not going to bust public last received I did say
Excuse me, but we on Zoom are not getting anything. It is completely like three layers of echo and not intelligible. Is there anything maybe you could not share a mic and pass it back and forth instead?
You try to even ask me one two three. If those microphone really close to you guys. Audio testing one two.
To notify them of our claim of safe harbor, which we which we've done. We also notified the applicant of our claim of safe harbor, which was required by according to town council. And then we have received a lot of public feedback in between last hearing and this hearing. We're not going to do a full public. We're not going to do public comments at this hearing. Just because we already had a robust public comment period last hearing and people have continued to send public comments in between the hearings. But so we're not going to do a full public hearing at this at this meeting. But I think what probably makes the most sense right now is to have the applicant just update us on what has happened in between these two hearings. Then we'll take some questions and comments from the board. And if any of the other any other board members from town want to speak, we'll let we'll let them speak and then we'll see about we'll see what we can do from there.
Speaker. Good evening. How's the sound for folks online? And in here? Okay, so my name is Laura Baker. I'm the real estate development director from Valley Community Development. We are the applicant for the proposed conversion of the Econo Lodge Hotel to permanent supportive affordable housing. I'm joined tonight by Felicity Hardy, who's our counsel, and also by Alexis Brightneiker, who has COVID. She decided not to share it with you folks. So she is also on Zoom and she's going to run. We did bring a PowerPoint to try to address some of the questions that we heard. We got a list of written questions from the finance committee and we're going to go through those. We heard some questions from the audience. The last time we were here about tenant selection and screening. So we figured we would go through some of those and also just try to collate some of the data about Hadley Housing Needs with the proposal that we're offering before you. There we are. So she's going to run that for us. Is that as big as it got? There we go. That's us tonight. Next slide. So one of the questions from the finance committee was, would there be lost revenue because of the proposed use versus the current hotel business? Alexis, can you make your sidebar smaller? From all the way up, she's up in Covington. No.
That might be ours.
Oh, that's yours. Okay, never mind.
Somebody can put that one.
Awesome. So question about taxes essentially tax revenue. So the property at 329 Russell Street, which we talked about last time cannot generate future lodging taxes. And our observation is that newer, more expensive hotels are becoming the norm and the standard, the desired standard in Hadley, and that there may be a potential to make up lost lodging tax revenue by driving business from the economy level hotels to the higher end hotels. Next slide. So and then we, you know, have had, I had quite a bit of back and forth with the tax assessor about anticipated real estate taxes from the proposed use. And our collective best guess is that the taxes will be essentially in the same range as they were for the hotel as they would be for the affordable housing. We're a private nonprofit. The housing would be owned by LLC that's also private, so we would not be tax exempt. We would need to pay real estate taxes according to the value of property. So with a valuation of approximately $4 million, the annual real estate tax bill would be a little over 46,000. That's with the FY23 tax rate. Next slide. So then we looked at other potential real estate tax scenarios. One was the conversion of the Econo Lodge to another commercial use, as is being proposed with Howard Johnson's. And again, we thought that real estate taxes would stay approximately the same. Someone last time we were here at this meeting suggested that we lease or sell the property to the Chinese Immersion Charter School, who's been looking to expand. And I would observe that they are a tax exempt owner in use and would be tax exempt, the loss of estimated 46,000 to the town. Another potential is to lease out to a nonprofit provider of housing for special populations or to UMass for student housing. And both of these uses were happening, had happened at the Econo Lodge previously. Again, with a tax exempt owner and user, that entity would not be required to pay real estate taxes, would be tax exempt, potential loss to the town of about 46,000 per annum. Next slide. And the need the finance committee asked that we look into the financial impact of our potential use to added costs. So not only the potential loss of revenue to the town, but would the increased costs because of the nature of the redevelopment that we're proposing? Next. So we looked at a couple of different potential impact areas, water sewer roads. We are projecting a slightly reduced use and that means a potential reduced cost in future maintenance for water sewer and roads. We talked a bit about schools last time. We're proposing studios and one bedrooms. We're targeting single adults and couples, and it's pretty unlikely that it's not impossible that we'll have children live at the property, but probably it would be a small number. And just a side note that the largest item in Hadley's town budget is the cost of schools. Next slide. Other impacts that we could think of on the town and the local finances were secondary economic impacts. So when it was operating, the Econo Lodge was operating typically at 53% occupancy per year. This is before COVID. Our apartments that Valley operates tend to run about 95 to 100% occupancy. So more people, more customers, more people buying things at nearby stores. Another impact is to provide workforce housing. So Hadley employers need employees in order to be profitable. And as we've observed, this hotel building is located very close to many employers in Hadley. Next slide. And then I think where the real discussion came down was around emergency services, police, fire and EMS. So would the town's 911 call rate increase because of the population that we're proposing to serve? And so we had done already a deep dive on this from a previous project where residents had a similar question. So we were able to look through our kind of comb through our own records of comparable properties. We see about two calls per person average in those properties. We're estimating 1.5 per year per person here because at the other properties, we don't have any staff. And so we'll talk about later the amount of staffing that we're proposing to have at this particular site. So the rest is math with expected occupancy of 15 to 62 people. We have a certain call volume. Someone had pulled the call records for the Econo Lodge from the last few years. So we were able to compare that. And indeed, we anticipate more calls that we would have a potential increase of 67 calls per year with the new use over the past use. Next slide. So I looked at Hadley's 911 call logs for the calendar year 2022 and found that there were 14,029 calls. And I again did the math, an increase of 79 calls is an increase of 1/10th of 1% in call volume. So I would describe it as an incremental increase over the total call volume that comes in during a year in Hadley. Next slide. So what other costs might happen, might need to be borne by the police, fire and ambulance departments? So we talked about this incremental increase in call volume. We're not aware of any new public safety equipment that would be needed because it's an existing building, existing site. It's fully sprinkled. It's hardwired for smoke detectors. So it's a fairly modern building in terms of its safety. And we understand that Hadley is in the process of adding capacity to these departments because we do understand that these departments are stretched in town. Next slide. So what if we're wrong? What if despite our best conscious efforts to figure out how many calls we'll generate were off? So what would it? What could a community do in the future to address a discrepancy? So we had a couple of ideas that are up for conversation, one being to benchmark and track the 911 calls before and after occupancy. We could potentially post a bond, which is sometimes done with subdivision product projects or set up a capitalized reserve. Next. We also think, as we've done with other communities, that we could be very helpful to Hadley in securing grants to offset any added costs to the town. So towns that host new affordable housing are become eligible and competitive for some state resources, infrastructure, public health, public safety that they might not otherwise receive. And so that could potentially add value both to the housing that we want to create and to the larger community. Next. So the other third question from the finance committee was, does the proposed use serve the highest priority group of residents in town? Is what we're proposing a good match for the population in Hadley? So just so people who might not have been here last time will know what we are proposing is 50 apartments, a mix of studios and one bedrooms with up to 33 apartments that are designated and set aside for very low income residents who would pay 30% of their income towards their rent and utilities. And I'm showing the income caps for a single person, just under 20,000 for two people closer to 23,000. And then up to 25 of these apartments could have a homeless preference and four apartments would have a preference for a wheelchair user because they would be fully handicapped accessible. Next slide. So the balance of the apartments would be for kind of moderate income tenants. And these tenants wouldn't have a rental subsidy, so they would pay a fixed below market rent. And we're showing you the income caps for folks in this category. For a single person, it's a little under 40,000. For two people, it's about 45,000. And then just a sidebar that a person working 40 hours a week at the Massachusetts minimum wage of $15 an hour would have a gross income of 31,200. And so that dovetails nicely with the housing that we're proposing to create because that is the situation that many people are in. They're working at minimum wage jobs, especially in that Route 9 corridor where there's a lot of restaurants and service businesses. And so those folks would fall within this tier of rental housing. Next. The projected rents for these moderate income tenants would be 938 for a studio and just over 1,000 for one bedroom with all utilities included in rent. And so that's kind of a big deal in today's rental market. Heat, hot water, air conditioning, electric, cooking, all included in rent. And we find that tenants these days are really strained by utility costs. It's not just the rent, which might stay the same for a year, but the heating and electricity costs are going up, 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 up. Next. So then we looked at who lives in Hadley currently. And we pulled some data. So almost 52% of Hadley renters are cost burdened. This is a definition from the state. It means that those folks are paying more than a third of their income for rent, or roughly a third. And 31% are severely cost burdened, which means they are now paying more than half of their income for rent, which is not a really sustainable way to live. Next. And then an additional little over 27% of homeowners are also housing cost burden. So even though these folks don't have rent to pay, they have mortgages and taxes and other insurance and costs that drive their housing costs up higher than a third of their income. Next. 50, just over half of Hadley renters and little less than a quarter of Hadley homeowners earn less than $50,000 a year, making most of these folks income eligible to live at the proposed apartments. We couldn't line it up exactly with our income tiers because the census data doesn't work that way, but you can kind of see the the big picture of it. Next. So one thing I think that's not necessarily understood outside of our industry is the definition of homeless. So and there are several definitions, honestly, that are used. The one that we would apply to this project is kind of the common HUD. It's the broadest definition of homeless. So it's the things that one would suspect, individuals and households that do not have a fixed, regular, adequate nighttime residence. People who are sharing housing. So people who are living with family members or doubled up somewhere because they can't afford their own housing, could be adult children, anybody. People who are living in hotels, motels, camping, et cetera, shelters, awaiting care and foster foster care placement or live in overcrowded housing also meet this test, this definition of homeless. Next. Individuals that whoops, are living in cars, parks, et cetera, individuals that are subject to domestic violence in their homes. They may have an adequate home, but it's not safe in this way. And then people who are at risk of homelessness because the individual or household has an income below 30% of the median income for the geographic area. So even people who are housed, if their income is very low, are considered homeless because they're at risk of homelessness. Next. So we looked at Hadley and we looked at who met that criteria in Hadley, extremely low income households in Hadley. We found that 22% of Hadley renters and 6% of Hadley homeowners earn less than $20,000 a year, qualifying them as being at risk of homelessness and eligible for an apartment with a homeless preference. Next. And then we've heard a lot about potential needs for seniors, particular needs for seniors in Hadley. So a couple of data points just about Hadley seniors, that 19% of Hadley residents are seniors. 33% of Hadley seniors earn in this kind of lower income tier below 50,000. 205 Hadley households receive food stamps and almost half of them are seniors. Next. So the Hadley COA reports that more social service hours are devoted to Hadley people experiencing housing crises, these are Hadley seniors, than any other kind of outreach assistance. We provide case managed support to clients who desperately need affordable and sustainable housing options. So this is a quote that came from a letter, a letter of support that came from the Hadley Council on Aging. As a side note, in Valleys are other existing apartments that are affordable and small. We find that 42% of our tenants are seniors, and this is without any kind of preference or set aside for seniors. So there is kind of a natural meshing of the needs of seniors for small affordable apartments and providing small affordable apartments. Next. So more data, about 11% of elderly residents in Hadley reported having one or more disability. And then a quote for everyone from Hadley's Housing Production Plan. Hadley's elderly population is expected to continue to increase, which will likely raise demand for affordable and barrier free housing. Next. People may know this because it's been a lot in the news, but increasing numbers of seniors are homeless. So among the groups of people who are tracked as having the status of being homeless, seniors is a growing sector. So nationally in 2020, the share of people experiencing sheltered homelessness, which means living in a shelter pretty much 55 and over was 18% up from just the prior year at 16.5%. And over half of veterans in shelter were 55 or older. So homeless, low income persons and homeless seniors are increasingly an overlapping segment of our population. Next. So I pulled, I did a quick Google search of homelessness in Hadley and popped up a couple of stories. The first one was about an hour long interview with a gentleman who'd been walking the streets of Hadley every day for decades, who was homeless in Hadley. And then a very recent Daily Hampshire Gazette article, you probably might have seen it, says man cats removed from Hadley home with no heat running water. So this is someone who owns a home, but has income so low as to be considered homeless because this individual can't afford to keep heat and running water in his house. And what struck me in part about this article was the Board of Health, Fire Department, Police Department, Clinical Supervisor, Hadley Police Department, Council on Aging, Building Department will control all responded to try to ensure this resident's safety, to remove him and his animals from the house. So to me, that's that's a situation that has high demand on kind of public safety services. Next. So again, we think that there is a natural fit between the proposed housing and Hadley seniors and for the following reasons. Small size apartments are a good fit for seniors who want to downsize from a larger home. Apartments are affordable for seniors who are living on a fixed income. All utilities are included in rent, so it protects people from the risk of escalating utility costs. And it also means your utilities don't get shut off if you forget to pay the bill, which is a common thing that can happen. The apartments are accessible and the building has an elevator. So this hotel was built to be fully wheelchair navigable. If you come in on grade, all the hallways are wide and there's an elevator to travel between the two floors. The building is located on a very frequent PVTA bus route with two bus stops that are right in front. So if you are older and not driving anymore, for example, you can catch the bus very easily from this location. And you can also walk to multiple shops and restaurants. The Econo Lodge is located directly in front of the Mountain Farm Small. People probably know all the stuff that's around there. Next. So Hadley recently completed its, an update to its housing production plan, which is now making the rounds and being approved by various boards in town. And I skimmed through that and I pulled some quotes that I thought really related to this particular proposed development. So one of the goals in the housing production plan is to increase the number of affordable eligible housing by at least 11 units within the next 12 months. And what I know from decades in my field is nothing happens within 12 months. So I'm not sure how Hadley would reach that goal because it can take many, many years to develop affordable housing. The second quote talks about condominiums and apartments. It says it would be welcomed within the Village Overlay District and along the Route 9 corridor. So again, that connection of putting denser housing along the Route 9 corridor, which is where this property is. In addition, the town identified three specific sites that could be developed for affordable housing. One of them is the Hampshire Mall site, which is right in behind this property. And it says, and I quote, "The town is open to encouraging and using 40B as a permitting tool for these sites." And the last quote is that the town should pursue new affordable housing that meets the town's greatest needs, that is for seniors and lower income residents. Next. The other thing that's really highlighted in Hadley's Housing Production Plan are the limitations on development in Hadley. And so of note is Hadley has a lot of protected land in APR Land Trust Farmland. It has a lot of flood plains and flood hazard areas. It has aquifer slopes and wetlands. And so when you think about in your community, where you would want to put denser housing, there are many places in Hadley that would not be a good fit for that kind of housing development, whereas Route 9 to me is a good fit for denser development. Next. So Hadley's actual housing production, that was the quotes earlier were from the kind of the goals. What we observe about actual production in Hadley is between 2020 and 2020, Hadley permitted 238 new single family homes and zero multifamily units. It's over 20 years. And Hadley has not added any affordable housing to its stock in over 20 years. Next. So we had questions last time about who would live in the housing and how we would select them, how they would be screened. And so I'm going to run quickly through what our normal process is for tenant selection. We do a lot of marketing, a very prescribed marketing and outreach. We will hold a lottery because we typically receive five to 10 applications for each single apartment. And so there's a lot more demand than there are apartments. We can't discriminate for the normal reasons that are stated in the law. Next. And what we do when we look at a potential tenant, whether they're coming from their own home, another apartment, whether they're the homeless status, we do a credit check, we do a query or criminal records check. We get landlord references or service provider references. If someone doesn't have a landlord, we conduct an interview with that tenant. And we look at their income. We determine their income through documentation. And for handicapped accessible units, we, someone has to demonstrate that they need that adaptation. Next. So here are some examples of why someone might be denied for a tenancy. So in the criminal record, a sex offender, anyone listed on the state registry would not be approved. It's a controversial thing, but that's where our policy is. Persons with a history of production and distribution of methylphenidate, federal requirement, and a criminal record of offenses that involve physical danger or violence to persons or property, or that adversely affect the health, safety and welfare of other people. We do not accept tenants that we believe would pose a threat to other tenants or to neighbors. So someone was asking me, someone I see here, who are asking me, about the criminal records and how we made those decisions. So we might see someone, for example, who has an offense, DUI, shoplifting, something like that when they were young, 18, and now they're 45. And if their record is clean for the last couple of decades, we'd say, yeah, that person's a good risk. If they have repeated offenses or recent offenses that we would look at in a different light and something where someone has done a violent crime or created damage, we'll look at differently than not paying child support or some of the other reasons that someone might have a criminal record. Next. So one thing that is super important to us and really what we've learned over time is that it's it's excellent to provide people an affordable place to live. But it's not the end of the story for some people. They have other needs. And so what we're proposing at 329 Russell Street is a full time onsite resident services coordinator. This is someone with a social work background who can help people connect with community based services, assist with daily logistics, help resolve tenant conflicts and coordinate transportation. We're also proposing a live in resident manager who's available during overnights to respond if anything pops up during the nighttime. A property manager who's different than the resident services coordinator. They upkeep the property, address tenant complaints, collect rent, enforce the lease. Maintenance staff do the normal things, maintenance staff do repairs and whatnot. Next. So one of the comments that came from the board at the last meeting was just not really understanding what the overarching benefits of this proposal were for the town of Hadley. So we wanted to highlight some of what we see of as the benefits to the town. So meeting the needs of Hadley residents, especially low income households, elderly households, homeless households and disabled persons, which data shows us all of these persons currently reside in Hadley. Continue to provide real estate tax revenue, provide workforce housing close to local businesses that are have help wanted signs up and are looking for employees. Next. The secondary economic impact from residents buying goods at the nearby Hadley businesses. Increase the town's competitiveness for state funding that is linked to new affordable housing production. Protect open space and farmlands by creating new housing in an already developed location. Add to the town subsidized housing inventory, creating a buffer for the town to stay above its goal of 10%. And help the town meet the goal stated in its housing production plan, including the creation of new affordable housing. Next. And in terms of support, again, the comment came up that some board members were hearing only negative comments. We have provided letters of support We have provided letters of support from most of these entities, the Select Board, the Housing and Economic Development Committee, the Committee on Diversity Equity Inclusion, the Council on Aging, our local representatives and Hadley residents, and then the Planning Board sent forward, I believe, conditions for approval. Next. It's the end. So happy to take questions. I noticed that I think we have the police and fire chief, at least they were on the Zoom, and I don't know if they wanted to speak to some of the concerns that people had about the burden on public safety.
I can, yeah, I mean, I, I'm happy to, to answer any questions that anybody has. And I did, after the last meeting, I got, you know, several questions from folks in town and I'm pretty sure the fire chief did as well. And I know that the board, the zoning board themselves requested that we, you know, pop into this meeting and be available for any questions. What I would, what I would say is this, Laura and I have had multiple conversations. Much of the information that she presented in her PowerPoint, I have already heard. I've been at multiple Select Board meetings and I've been asked by the board themselves if I have concerns and based upon everything that I've heard from Laura and based upon information that I've gathered from Chief Casper in North Hampton. They have multiple buildings that are not necessarily run by the same group, but are very similarly run to what is being proposed in Hadley. And I've expressed to the board that I, I don't, you know, we can't predict the future, but I don't, I don't have any concerns. I think what she presented initially, when she and I first began to talk about this, what feels like years ago now, was, was the fact that I think everybody recognizes that the call volume is likely going to increase. But whether or not it increases to a point that is unmanageable is likely not the case based upon the numbers, you know, that we're looking at. The, the statistics that were presented at the last meeting are accurate. You know, please understand that, that those, those numbers, the call volume and things like that are, are accurate. But what I guess what I will, what I would tell you is, in speaking with the chief in North Hampton, the number does increase, their call numbers, she did send me call numbers for several different years at the locations that are similarly run. And while the numbers do increase, they, she has expressed to me that they are absolutely not unmanageable. The numbers actually do fluctuate, so they do go down some years as well. And the nature of the calls that she states they respond to mostly are medicals, noise complaints, family issues, and disturbances. And in speaking with both Alexis and Laura, their hope is that the folks who are living at the site, their, their 24-hour staff would hopefully be able to deal with the noise complaints and the family issues before, you know, public safety even comes into the equation. And so that's kind of, you know, that, that's really kind of the main point that I, I guess I would make. The only other thing that I, I was asked to do and I did do the best I could with it was to look back within our own statistics based upon the hotels in our town currently. And some of the, basically the hotels that were referenced at the last meeting based upon the clientele that they were serving. I can tell you that the average call duration for police and fire at any of the sites was anywhere between 19 and 23 minutes per call. And as much as it was difficult to find, we really had to kind of scroll through our log. We could not find any evidence of any type of delay or deferring what we call stacking calls based upon officers, firefighters, or medics being at one of those other locations. Please understand that, you know, as someone who is not a resident of Hadley, I am not speaking in favor of this, nor am I, nor am I speaking against it. I was just add to kind of, I was asked to provide some context to some of the numbers. And as I mentioned, if I had significant concerns, I would have expressed them to the Select Board in the past. Or, or I would be expressing them now. So I, I can't say that I do. But again, can't predict the future. So that's what I have.
Thank you.
So on the fire department side, I've had some very good conversations also with Alexis and Laura. And again, I have not opposed. And we did look at, I would kind of compare this somewhat to a Green Leaves Drive family housing scenario. So we were kind of equating what our call volume is that, you know, they're sprinkler building, fire alarms. And we respond, responded last year between all, all five buildings to 160 calls and they averaged about between 30 to 38 calls. It improved with fire prevention and outreach, which certainly is something we were discussing. You know, with Alexis and Laura about getting in there and working with folks to make sure that we have a robust. And that was one of, one of my goals and objectives when I started as, as chief was to make sure that our larger housing projects, we're gonna, we were gonna be working closely with them to make sure that they were, you know, evacuating during the fire alarms and, and trying, figuring out ways to mitigate that and lessen the number of calls due to cooking smoke or cooking fires, things like that. Also discussed, you know, we just finished applying for a large safer staffing grant through the federal government. And I know that, you know, that they are willing to step up to the plate for us and reach out to our state reps and senators to see if we could get some support for that. And again, I kind of have to answer for EMS as well. I'm sure there may be additional calls for that and I've just expressed our concerns that we have one paramedic-level ambulance in our community right now. And we are in the process of establishing our own first Hadley basic local ambulance. But again, we don't have the crystal ball on how many calls. I think it's going to be helpful having the onsite folks living there that they were discussing to manage some potential, you know, if there's any potential incidents, but also it sounds like they have a pretty robust screening process. I've also had the opportunity to speak with Tim from Craig Doors and he also is going to be working on this and we had discussed possibly putting together some sort of a, a working group. You know, if this does go through, the, how this, how we could, how we could work together to manage everything. I also have the role of emergency manager and that was another issue that was expressed is when we have all these, these rooms filled, it become part of our plan for emergency management in the event of an actual disaster or, you know, anything man-made or, or weather-related or whatever. So that's something we would have to work on to make sure that we, we had a plan in place for that as well. Those were, those were the concerns that were discussed and it sounds like they're very willing to support us on that. So again, I am not opposed and I apologize. I missed the last meeting. It wasn't because I wasn't notified. I was 100% notified. It was, I was away at professional development. Oh, my apologies for that. Thank you.
Chief Spankable, do you see any concern with having 50 residents, 50 kitchens in a building of that size stacked upon each other? I realized it functioned as a hotel before and there were times that hotel was fully booked. However, those are not long-term cooking and kitchen residences. Do you see any, any issues with having that kind of structure with 50 kitchens inside of it being 100% full any time of the day? And do you see any issue for the Hadley Fire Department? Because I know you guys have a lot of calls as it is already, particular with Route 9. I mean, are you, you're confident that the Hadley Fire Department will be able to absorb that at no extra needs from the town in terms of staffing or equipment?
I, I wouldn't be able to, I wouldn't be able to give you an answer on that. I know that there is a sprinkler building, which adds a level of protection to that. And I know that we've had discussions in, when they create these new cooking areas of, they were very willing to utilize these, basically it's a fire stop product. It is installed above the stove, stoves in the event of it. We've also done some pretty serious outreach with, like I said, with Green Leaves, with Winfield Senior and Family because of the number of calls we were getting. When the structure was built, when that, that structure was built, they vented all the stoves directly back into the living areas. So basically what you're cooking on the stove and it just has a hood vent with a charcoal filter in it and it blows right back into the room and ends up setting off the smoke factor. So we were discussing how we might be able to manage that and because it can, it can add a substantial number of calls for fire alarms due to just, you know, accidental burning your chicken in the, in the oven. And it's not, not that we're going to a fully involved structured fire, it's just that it, it becomes another call that we have to respond to. So I, I really don't know how to evaluate that at this point, but I know that they are expressing measures to mitigate that.
Thank you. The, um, the problem I have with this, if I could just kind of give my opinion on this, is that, that we don't allow apartments in town. And that is something that's, that people have decided through the zoning bylaw. Zoning bylaw has not allowed apartments since 1961. The only apartments of similar nature that we have were done through an unfriendly 40B, so people didn't have any say in that. That was done back in 1993 or that was approved in 93, I guess, and built in 98. I mean, I just think people have had a lot of time to change the bylaw and, and make it allow for apartments. They've had 60 years to do that and have chosen not to do that. So I just, I just see this as a, as a pretty big ask to, to place an apartment in the, in the middle of town like that, in the middle of the commercial district. And I don't, I don't think it's a, a bad project. It doesn't seem like a bad plan. It seems very well thought out. I just, I just have a lot of questions about whether this is the right way to do it. I know you hear about the, this Hadley housing planning, HPP, whatever it was called. And I mean, I, I just, I strongly feel that if we want to have apartments and have all these different styles of, of accommodations in town, that, that we should, you know, bring it to town meeting. We should, we should change the, change the zoning in town to make it more flexible for people, if people want more flexible zoning. In this particular instance, we're, we're being told that we need to be concerned about this 10% number and we're at 12 and a half percent in 2023 and the only thing that might happen is in 2032 that the, the vesta, the, you know, former Winfield apartments might come off the rolls in 2032. And we're now being told that that is actually probably not even going to happen based on Massachusetts Supreme Court cases that say that, you know, the comprehensive permit doesn't, that, that the permit doesn't allow them to take the, take the affordable housing and make it market rate. So that's probably actually not going to even happen in 2032. But if it were to happen in 2032, you're looking at something that's not going to impact us until the 2040 census. So, you know, we're being asked to make this big change that's, you know, really not being agreed to by everyone in town. It's not, it's not allowed by our zoning and we're being asked to make that change for something that might happen in 2040. And I, it just feels like a, it, it doesn't feel like something that should be decided by the, the zoning board of appeals. It doesn't feel like something that should be decided by the, by the Select Board and the Planning Board. This feels like something that the, the zoning of the town belongs to the people of the town. The people of the town have agreed on the zoning. And I think we should have a really good reason to, to change that zoning on people without them, without everybody having a say on it, without everybody voting on it. And I, I think that's what this, this plan is asking to do and and, and frankly, the, that when you see the, that, that presentation, which is HPP of wanting to change them all into, into apartments and I mean, these, these are big changes we're talking about and to be making them on a, on a board level, on a, on an appointed board level with three people. I, I'm just not comfortable with it. I, I don't think that's the right way to do zoning. I don't think that's, I don't think that's the right way to do the town planning. Like I said, I, I've gotten a lot of emails about this on, on both sides of it, but I've, but a lot of the emails are from people who are, who seem to be feeling like we need to change the zoning in town. But this apartment, this, this complex doesn't change the zoning in town. This is going to be 50 units for a very specific group of people and I, I don't, I don't think it's going to accomplish what, what people think it's going to accomplish in emails that I've gotten. I, I, people in the emails have talked about, you know, single mothers, they've talked about young professionals, they talk about people getting their careers started. And, you know, based on the narratives that I've seen and, and the explanation of what this apartment complex would be, I, I don't think it's going to accomplish any of those things. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not opposed to apartments in town. I, I think, I think we need, I think we need more housing for young families. I think we need more, more varieties of housing for older people. I think we need more varieties of housing all around. But this isn't, this isn't really a variety of housing that we're talking about here. This is a very, very particular type of housing that I don't think actually addresses many, many of the, you know, shortcomings of our current.
Picking, picking up from what our chairman, Mr. Bombadur, has said, like, I do personally appreciate all, all, all of the calls and comments and emails about this and it is very diverse and varied, people's opinions. However, I don't, echoing his sentiments, I don't think that a unilateral granting of a variance by three appointees on a board should be the way to go for granting such a a substantial variance to an established zoning law that again, the community voted on and has been long established for a long time. I do agree that I think this should be brought before the town. And if the townspeople collectively see a change in the zoning should be made and voted on, then, you know, it just, I don't think something of this scale should be decided at this juncture. I mean, and also I think the sense of urgency, once the sense of urgency is put more into perspective, I think we do have time to approach this and make, you know, a measured, a measured response. I mean, Hadley is in, I believe, the top 10% of affordable housing towns. And we're a small community, but you know, the percentage-wise, we are very high compared to a lot of other communities. So we do have time to make appropriate decisions. And that's where I'm at right now. I do appreciate your time and everybody's input.
Mr. Bow, if you have anything to say.
Yeah, I, I feel the same way, right? It, it feels like something that has, has come to our desk, right? And, and to make a decision on. But it feels like it's really a community decision that should be, should be enacted on.
I mean, the fact that there's so many people on, on both sides of it, to me, to me, just, just proves that this isn't really the right venue to do it. We, we don't have any ability to, we're, we're an appointed board. We, we don't, we, we're not, we don't have any ability to, to suss out what the, what the wants of the town is. I mean, that, which means to me, it looks to me like, I mean, I think we should just fall back onto our zoning, which is something that everybody's agreed on. Everybody's supposed to live by the zoning. I mean, I understand this is like a legally allowed process, but I don't, I don't see how this is any different than spot zoning where you're gonna, you're gonna pick one property, you're gonna treat it completely differently than all the other properties around it and, and infect all the other properties in town.
Well, it's like, what grounds would we have to enforce our zoning bylaw, be this variance to any other applicant that comes afterwards? Essentially just overriding the will of the town of Hadley and what they've decided the zoning bylaw should be.
I just think it should be decided by the town. I, I think if the town was to put together a comprehensive plan to try to do this type of thing, then, then I think we should come up with some type of overlay district for apartments and, and people should, people should get together and we should agree on where the apartment should go in town. And, and there should be apartments in town and there should be apartments for low-income people and there should be apartments for middle-income people and high-income people. Even, you know, I, I, I just don't.
The lady for legal representation has a question or statement. The mic is over there, please. Thank you.
I'm Ms. P. R. D., the attorney for Valley CDC. I, I hear what you're saying. I just wanted to point out a couple of things. First of all, this isn't a variance. And one of the big differences between what you are presented with now and a variance is you have the ability to condition them on things that, on, you know, characteristics that you think are important. Now, I hear what you're saying and all I'm, all I'm saying is that all I'm, all I'm saying is that that's a very fundamental difference between this process and a variance. It's also a distinction that that is different than if you change the zoning. So if you change the zoning, you could change the zoning and identify zones in Hadley that would permit multifamily housing. But the key difference with this thing is, this application is if there are aspects of the, of the use that you'd like to condition, for example, if there were, if if the town or this board thought that housing for veterans was was a priority, that's something that you can build into the permit. And you don't have that kind of flexibility for a variance or town changing town zone. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Excuse me, would you introduce yourself to the audience?
Yes, certainly.
And are you a resident of the town?
No, I'm the, I'm the attorney for Valley CDC. Okay, thank you.
Thank you firstly for the correction. I know I did say variance, but that's something we deal with a lot on this, but I understand it's a comprehensive permit. Unless anyone else on the board has anything they'd like to add, I'm prepared to make a motion.
I didn't see an motion.
Then I make a motion to deny the request for a comprehensive permit, chapter forty B for property located on the south side of Russell Street, assessors map ten A, lot zero zero two two industrial zone by the applicant Valley Community Development.
Second, the motion.
I was a bear.
I, I.
Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I offer a comment or two? It's Jay Tallerin from Town Council's office.
Sure.
So I I think it would be important to also to formally close the hearing. That will set a deadline of forty days to actually issue the written decision, which you could draft up or we could help draft up and then present at your, you could could go over it at your next meeting, provided that meetings within forty days.
Yeah, so I make a motion to adjourn the eating.
Motion to close the hearing.
Close the hearing, excuse me.
Second motion.
I was in favor.
I, I.
Anything else, Mr. Teller?
No, you know, we'll, we'll obviously help with with any drafting, which would be consistent with the the safe harbor election that you had. Otherwise, I I'm here to answer any questions you have. But it certainly the process has been proper and appropriate so far. So I can find my, any comments to the kinds of things I just mentioned regarding the closing of the hearing.
Thank you. I I don't think, I don't think we have any other question.
No, thank you.
At this time.